Good afternoon to everyone, and I pray and trust that everyone's doing well. I want to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robertson County to order for our regular meeting July 11, 2023. May we bow here for invocation, please? Dear Lord God, our heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for who you are. We're just so thankful for your goodness, for your kindness, for your mercy, and for your grace. We're thankful for your powerful arm of protection as you bless our going out and our coming in. We pray for families, we pray for loved ones, we pray for those in the hospitals, nursing home. We just believe and call for divine healing in the lives of so many that need it. We thank you for your blessing of last academic school year. You kept us safe, you blessed this board, and you helped us to grow and to improve. For that, we give thanks. So now we're asking for your continued blessings and goddesses as we enter into this new academic year of 2324. It is our prayer that you will have your way, that we will be led by you. We need you, we're depending on you. We call and we say thanks for all that you are and all that you have done for us. In Christ's name we pray, amen. At this time, I want to open the floor for election for the new chairman for the academic year 2324, and I will receive nominations at this time.
Dr. Williamson, I'd like to make a motion to Randy Lawson as chairman.
I have a motion for Mr. Randy Lawson. Our vice chair to serve as chair is a second to that, and we have a second on that. Any other nominations? If not, we're closed to nominations. So it has been moving properly second that our vice chair, Mr. Randy Lawson, served as our chair for the academic school year 2324. All those in favor say aye. Any opposes? The ayes have it. Mr. Lawson is our chair. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. As we proceed through the meeting, it is now time to elect the vice chair for the Public Schools of Robertson County 2324 school year. Do I have any nominations? Mr. Henry? Oh, I'm sorry. Have you got it?
It's, there it is. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and all due respect to all board members and comments that was made in the previous meeting. It is my belief, and I totally agree with electing officials that are most qualified. And with that being said, I'd like to say at this time, I'd like to nominate Dr. Lyndee Emanuel.
Is there a second?
A nomination doesn't require a second.
Okay.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. Is there any more nominations? You got it?
Okay, son. I'd like to nominate John Simmons.
Okay. Okay, we have two nominations. Is there any more? Mr. Short said it didn't have to have a second on.
It does not require a second.
Okay. All right. Do we have any more nominations or closed? All in favor of Dr. Emanuel, say aye. What? What you got, Tilly? Just show of hands, okay?
Did you get that?
Mm-hmm. Four? That's fine, show of hands, that's fine. Okay. All those in favor of Mr. John Simmons, raise your hand. Six. Okay. Mr. John Simmons will be the vice chair for 2324 board.
Mr. Chairman, as Simmons moved to that slot, I want to say thank you, Mr. Simmons, for your service as chair. We accomplished a lot under your leadership as chair, and we appreciate that. And then congratulations, Mr. Lawson, to you and your selection as chair. And Mr. Simmons, congratulations and his selection as vice chair.
Thank you, Dr. Williamson. Can I have a motion for adoption of agenda? I have a motion by Mr. Vontae Leach and a second by Mr. Britt. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. A motion for approval of the minutes, open session. Mr. John Simmons made the motion. Ms. Ocean with a second. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Information items, announcement of settlement. Mr. Richard Short.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three settlements to announce in accordance with the North Carolina Open Meetings Law. They are as follows. Announcement of Jewel Labs settlement in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 143 318.11a 3. The Public Schools of Robertson County Board of Education announces that a settlement has been reached in the class action lawsuit, federal multi-district litigation captioned In Red Jewel Labs, Inc., Marketing, Sales, Practices, and Products Liability Litigation, MDL number 2913, and the coordinated proceeding captioned Jewel Lab Product Cases, JCCP number 5052. On March 14, 2023, the board executed a release and settlement agreement that resolves all outstanding disputes between the parties by the defendants providing to the Robertson County Schools compensatory restitution for alleged harms in the amount of $521,231 to be paid in installments over time, less amounts for attorney's fees and costs. Second settlement announcement in compliance with 143, General Statute 143 318.11a 3. The Public Schools of Robertson County Board of Education announces that a settlement has been reached in the matter of EC student and SM parent petitioners versus the Public Schools of Robertson County Respondent, case number 23EDC 00069. On May 9, 2023, the parties executed a settlement agreement that resolved this contested case with no admission of fault. The settlement agreement resolves all outstanding disputes between the parties by providing additional services and support for the student, reduced attorney's fees in the amount of $29,000, and a complete release of the board from any and all claims or causes of action. On May 10, 2023, petitioners filed a voluntary dismissal in this matter, and the presiding administrative law judge ordered the case closed. The third settlement is in McMillan versus Robertson County Board of Education, a Torque Claims Act bus incident. The Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robertson County and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction have reached a settlement agreement in a case filed under the state Torque Claims Act. The claim arose out of an incident on a school bus in November 2019. A student claimed he sustained injuries on a bus ride home after another student pulled the brake, causing the bus to suddenly stop. Assistant Attorney General Ashley Weathers negotiated a settlement of $2,500, and the student's claim was voluntarily dismissed with prejudice on June 25, 2023. That concludes the reports of the announcements of settlements.
Okay, thank you, sir. New playground equipment update, Mr. Bobby? Yes?
Mr. Schwartz, I guess to you or Mr. Eric, is it would be to determine later on how that money we're receiving would be spent or where it would be put? The $500,000?
Yeah, that'll be up to the board, and we'll be getting that in installments, but we don't have the first dime yet.
Right, I understand.
But we will be getting it.
Okay, so we have some leeway in how it can be spent.
You have complete discretion in how it can spend.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hang on, Mr. Bobby. Mr. Gentry, are you, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, your light's on, I didn't know. Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Thank you, and congratulations, Chairman Lawson, members of the board, Dr. Williamson. Just want to update you on, and Chairman Lawson, if it's okay, just for me to run down. So the first one is the new playground equipment update. As you're aware, we started this process last school year with updating all of our playgrounds at all of our elementary schools. So we are currently at our last two schools. Roland Norman is currently under construction. When they leave that site, they will then go over to Tanglewood to remove that. This, again, this has been a project that's been a year undertaking, and we believe that this is probably one of the most successful projects because it gives all of the schools, all of our children, the same equipment across the district. So again, several of the schools were closed down as the school year ended. WH Knuckles ended without any playground equipment the last month or two of school, but when they come back, those kids are going to have a brand-new playground. So again, this was a project that, again, started last year, but will conclude by the time school starts back. The multipurpose classroom update, we did have our pre-bid meeting today. We had approximately 20 contractors in attendance, which is a plus for us because we feel confident that we will be able to secure three-plus bids, so we will not have to rebid this project. Excuse me, we are going to bid these projects separately just because of the amount, the dollar amount that we believe is going to come in as, and that way it will ensure the contractors would have the appropriate bonds in place to get the work done. Both projects, both multipurpose classrooms at St. Paul's and Purnell Sweat, the time will be, from the time we sign off on the bids, it will be 300-day timeline. So this is another project that we believe will be completed before or by or along the start of school next school year. When we originally started discussing these projects, many of you may know that the lead time on the buildings were going to be as long as 52 to 60 weeks. We anticipate now that those lead times on the buildings will only be three to four months. So again, this is the, we had our pre-bid meetings today for St. Paul's and Purnell Sweat.
Bobby, let's clarify, next school year, with 2425, correct?
Yes, sir, I apologize, 2420, 2425. Also, even though this talks about the new classroom addition at St. Paul's High, we approved a modular unit with eight classrooms to go into St. Paul's High. In order for that to take place, we had to have some utility work that needs to be completed up there. So one of the bid meetings or pre-bid meetings we had today was for utility work at St. Paul's High that will also impact the multipurpose classroom, but also we cannot move into that new classroom addition at St. Paul's High without having water, power, and sewer. So we had approximately six to seven contractors at the pre-bid meeting today for the utility work, and again, that timeline to get that work, if I'm not mistaken, was less than 100 days from the time we, from the time we opened bids. So currently, the new classroom addition at St. Paul's High will not be, our timeline for completion is December of this year. So Mr. Suggs and staffs aware that that classroom will not be available until second semester? Excuse me, but he is currently working his schedule now to place, to have a roving schedule for the fall, but to have that classroom open in the spring. But we are able at this time, so the building's just not sitting there. We are doing some electrical stuff inside the building, and you know, we're doing the floor, and then we're going to start working on getting the brick outside taken care of before that December deadline.
Dr. Emanuel?
Mr. Bob.
I got you.
You got me, am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
Allow me to make a statement. I want to say my appreciation to those who voted for me for vice chair, thank you. But anyway, Bobby, getting back to St. Paul's High School, is this in response to the Title IX, our concern about the equality of the female, is this trying to address any of that to your knowledge, that classroom?
No, so the classroom at St. Paul's High is just to address the additional students there. The potential concern that I think has been out there is a restroom situation, and we currently have some plans in place for that. But that, the utility work would have to take place as well before we could address any restroom issues at the softball field.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Emanuel, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So was your question in reference to the eight classrooms or to the multipurpose classroom?
Yes, sir.
The multipurpose classroom as it relates to Title IX?
Right, so again, that facility will be able to be used by both male and female sports teams on campus. And lastly.
Hang on, Mr. Bobby, hang on one second, Mr. Vontae.
Going back to what Ms. Linda Emanuel said, will they be in the bathrooms outside of the multipurpose classroom at St. Paul's? I mean, without multipurpose classroom outside St. Paul's High School, because I think that's what she referring to as the girls, I think the girl, I think it was the girl softball, if I'm not mistaken, and her parents and stuff been complaining. Were we addressed, I know you said we're going to address it, are we going to address it with a multipurpose, but bathrooms on the outside, or we doing a whole nother plan with the bathrooms? I think that's, that's what she wanted to do.
So we have partnered with our engineers to design a set of restrooms that will be located at the St. Paul's High softball field. But again, we can do nothing there with that until all the utility work has taken place. So we have not bid out anything, shared plans with anyone, all of those plans are intern, have been internal.
It's on.
Okay.
Mr. Vontae, that answered a big part of my question, and just to add, am I correct on those multipurpose classrooms? We couldn't go there and put restrooms that was outside for the public coming in. I want to say, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Couldn't do that for those, and there is a separate thing, what you just said for those, and which was a softball issue.
Yes.
That works, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bobby.
Okay, next on the agenda is the HVAC work that we're doing as it relates to ESER 2 and 3. So we divided this work up in where LL and Jay completed our work for HVAC 2, ESER 2, and you should have a handout at your table, I'm sorry, it's on a beige sheet of paper. So just to run very quickly through the summer work that's taking place on campuses now and the current status where we're at with all of those projects that are funded through ESER 2. So Lomerton Jr., you can see we're about 40% of the building complete. Lomerton Jr. is a complete new system throughout the entire building. So everything at Lomerton Jr. will be brand-new when we complete this project. The only thing that will not be done by the time school starts back will be the roof units at the gym. We're about 40% complete there. Pembroke Middle, again, same thing, about 40%. The, what will not be completed there is the rooftop units at the gym. Pembroke Middle will almost be an entire new unit throughout the building, except for those places where we had no other choice but to use PTACs, and those have been there over the last few years. The next school on the list, excuse me, is Peterson. The contractor for Peterson also has Rex Renner, so you can see minimal work's been done at Peterson at this point, but the contractor has ensured us that that work will be completed by the time school starts, by the time we get school up and running. At Peterson, two years ago, we replaced half the units there, so this work is not the entire school, it's only about half the units, it's one wing at Peterson. Prospect is another location where it's almost the entire school building, except for those units. Some of you may know what we call the old building, if I'm standing in front of the school to the left, some of those units will not be replaced, but Prospect is right at, excuse me, 80% complete. Rex Renner, excuse me, is about 85% complete, and that school will be up and running by, excuse me, by the time school starts. And lastly. And lastly for.
Take your time, Mr. Bobby. They're wearing you out tonight.
And last, lastly for ESER 2, we have Townsend, and at Townsend, we did, we did a complete wing, the cafeteria wing at Townsend, and replaced a boiler. So half of the cafeteria, one of the systems in there will not be in place until September, but we just put a brand-new unit in the other half, so Townsend should be fine by the time school starts back. And next, our biggest projects that we were able to fund through ESER funding is going to be all of our work at the high schools. So this summer, we took and we're replacing all of the boilers except for Purnell Sweat. We had just gone through and done some work at Purnell Sweat the last few years, but we are just about, we have just about completed all of our boiler replacements at all of our high schools. Next school year, because of the lead time on chillers, is next summer is when we will begin our chiller work at all of our high schools.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Ocean?
Mr. Bobby, regards to the installation for the cafeteria work to be done at Townsend, would that interrupt the school day at all, would it be done during the time people, when those kids are not there?
No, it will not interrupt the school, the school day at all, because everything will be on the outside, and since they already have a unit that's up and running, we will not have to disconnect anything for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Bobby, where are we at with, I think Oxendine was supposed to have some drop ceiling and air conditioning? Is that later, or where is that at? Because I know it was summer work from what I remember.
Yeah, so that work has already started, I'm not sure how far along in completion, but we have, I know they've been working on the ceiling and getting the lights put in, and what we've done, we've already framed up the windows for PTACs because there, there's no way to go and install a new HVAC system there. So next school year, part of our ESER funding at some of our schools will be for windows. So next summer, we will go there and replace the windows in that, in that particular wing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
All right, thank you.
May I, Mr. Chairman, Bobby, update, update us, please, where we are, we're cleaning our buildings?
Yes.
And update us on our grass-cutting contracts, how that is going, and then where are we on a Purnell Sweat tennis court and?
Fair amount, high contract, right, yes. I apologize for that. As you know, we expanded our, our grass-cutting teams this year, and I haven't, I've got nothing but rave reviews about those. It appears to be working well at all of our campuses. We do have, Mr. Armon Davis goes behind and checks everywhere, and so if there is an issue, we're able to contact the contractors, and it's addressed immediately. This is the second year for our summer cleaning teams. Uh, this is the second year for our summer cleaning teams. Uh, we divided the schools up a little bit differently this year. Uh, at this point in time, we believe that is going extremely well. We have not, uh, gotten any complaints about the summer cleaning. We believe that will be, that, uh, our schools will be ready to go August, uh, in August when our teachers return. Our contractor who was working on our Fairmont High track has since completed that project and moved over to Purnell Sweat. It is their intent to start turning that dirt there to see if we can go ahead and get the tennis courts put in before we get into colder months. So the track at Fairmont High is complete, there may be some cosmetics that need to take place there. Excuse me, but in terms of the track being installed and being striped, that is, that has been taken care of.
Mr. Craig?
Uh, Mr. Bobby and, and Chairman, um, Randy, I was at Fairmont High yesterday. I didn't get down next to the track, but I was on this hill looking, and just from a distance, like, you can't tell cosmetically on it how it looked, but now from a distance, that track looked good. They had done the lines and everything, and it, it was looking good. So, uh, hopefully the surface is good, but it, it looked good from a distance.
And also at Fairmont High, if you go by, we, through our skeezy grant money, we are doing some renovations to the press box at Fairmont High. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you, Mr. Bobby. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody to sign up? Heather Williams? Okay, we have one sign up and they're not here. Move on to action items. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, Public Schools, Robinson County Regular Board Meeting Schedule. You should have that in the news stuff. You got yours, Mr. Britt? Okay, hang on a minute. Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Tim.
The, uh, PSRC regular scheduled board meetings for twenty-three, twenty-four looks pretty standard of what we've already doing.
Right.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that was scheduled as presented.
Motion by Mr. Henry, second by Mr. Craig. All those in favor? Say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Public Schools, Robinson County Testing Calendar, Ms. Cindy Lewis.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, and congratulations. Dr. Williamson, good evening, and board members. I'm here to present the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. Uh, before I do, you have it in your packet. We sent it out with a packet, uh, with Ms. Patty last week, uh, so you've had time to look at it. But before I get started going through some of those, uh, testing dates, uh, give you a little bit of background about how this works. There are two documents that actually come into play before I can do anything with the testing calendar, and that is the school calendar for the year, as well as the North Carolina Operational Testing Calendar. Once I get those two pieces, I can actually create the testing calendar, and we create a, a committee. We have three principals, we had one high school test coordinator, and I believe a teacher in the meeting with us when we created this calendar. And, uh, then we sent it out, or we actually talked about it, made sure that they approved it, they have seen it, they agreed to the calendar, and we are now presenting it to you as is.
Okay. Do I have a motion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Is that a motion by Ms. Ocean, second by, um, Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, Ms. Lewis, we're getting a lot of questions about when will we be able to release test data? Will you show that information to the state with certified, a date of when?
They certified, um, during the September board meeting, which is the first, uh, the second and third, I believe, in September.
Right.
And after that, we should be able to release your data.
Mr. Craig?
Chairman Lawson, I spoke to, uh, Ms. Lewis outside, and on the sheet she gave us for the testing calendar, and she told me where this is at in several locations, I believe on our website and some other information. But I've asked her to just run one sheet to at least, I'm gonna say give it to all board members, all these letters that's on here. Education is acronym thing, they use letters, they use letters. And, and I look at them now and, to be honest, which I don't know what most of them mean, but she said she was gonna get us a copy of what the letters mean to, to break it, so we could just take a quick glance when, like, if somebody calls us, asking us a question, what is this test being given? And they give us the letters, and like I said, I need a piece of paper in front of me, so Ms. Lewis said she'd get us that, and I appreciate that.
I'll, I'll get you one of the acronyms, and I'll also make sure that you have understood, just, you know where it's found on the board, um, page, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is PSRC, RCC, MOU, um, Dr. Wendy Dorsey Carr.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, um, Dr. Williamson and board members. Um, tonight, what I'm presenting is an MOU between Robinson Community College and the Public Schools of Robinson County. This is an extension from last year. Um, we have had an agreement over the last several years, working through early college and the community, um, career and college promise courses. This is now an agreement that includes all areas, so CTE, Robinson County Career Center, um, early college and RCC, that shows how all of the programs work together and make sure that we, um, meet the needs of our students throughout the district.
Dr. Manuel?
I just have a couple of comments, and then I'd like to make a motion. I do believe that we need to work harder with our principals and counselors to try to recruit more of our students into these programs, prom, promise, and all. Um, RCC has a lot to offer our children where they can expand the courses they take, but we have to be willing, our counselors, our principals, to work with the schedules of the children. Because in talking with the RCC board member, you know, we could really have more children involved in these courses, but we just have to recruit them. Cause not, ordinarily, a kid's not gonna walk up to a counselor and say, I want to be in this, this promise program, I want to be in that program. But with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding with RCC.
Okay.
And can, can I add that it has to be pending legal review, because the other team still has to review?
Pending legal review? I would like to make a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding pending legal review, pending legal review by our lawyer.
Okay. Well, Ms. Ocean has seconded it. Um, Dr. Manuel has made the motion, Ms. Ocean has seconded it. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay? Thank you, Dr. Carr.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Dr. Carr, to Dr. Emmanuel's question, we are gonna pilot at Fairmont High School next year, ninth graders. Will you talk about that, please?
Yes, so we've worked with RCC to start a pilot at Fairmont High to offer some classes from RCC on our campus, um, to see how that works, to see if then we can expand the program to other high schools. And that way, we can get more of our students enrolled in those courses at RCC and have more opportunities for them.
So those instructors coming to our campuses would automatically address that concern and increase our numbers.
Contract transportation, um, Dr. Robert Guzman?
Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, board members. In front of you in your packet is a synopsis of the, uh, contract transportation drivers or contract transportation companies that will be, are, we're asking to be used for next year. Um, all of their information has reviewed and reviewed, including their current insurance liability policy. As you look to the right in column C, you notice that there is a difference in the amount. That is based on the amount of students in which those carriers are allowed to carry. So you'll see tho- those varying amounts based on the amount of students at which they're able to transport at that time.
Okay. Ms. Vontae?
Uh, I wanna approve that. I wanna approve our contract transportation providers.
Okay. Mr. Vontae made the motion, Mr.? Okay. Mr. Craig made a second discussion. Mr. John Simmons, are you?
Good evening, Doc.
Good evening, sir.
What is the policy, um, far as getting the students to school on time?
Within that, they are, it's no different than our TMS, so it follows in with our regular transportation. They are supposed to make sure that those students are no later than possibly five minutes after the bell time. However, those transportation issues should be addressed in a timely manner based on that, due to the fact that these transportation are dealing with less students, so it's more direct from one location to the other.
So if, if one company, say Company A has ten students, but still have to pick up some other students, can you take some students from A and put them on B?
Yes, sir, we have to ship those timeframes, uh, throughout the year due to this fluctuation of what students are on contract transportation. And also, if somebody ends up being with, with McKinney-Vento Transportation, which is also done through contract transportation, and so those students would be adjusted in order to ensure that they are at school in a timely manner.
Okay, so the parents need to address you to that?
Yes, that's actually gone through, through our office, and actually should also be done, uh, through, with, with, excuse me, Ms. Renette McQueen. However, nine times out of ten, we're on that already with the drivers reporting those tardiness to Ms. McQueen, so we can adjust those as they, as they are needed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Terry, do you have a question? Hit it again, cause it's not coming up. Is your card able to weigh in, Mr. Terry?
Maybe you can cut some other microphones off, cause there's several other ones that are on.
Back on. Yeah.
Hey, Dr. Guzman. Hey, sir. So, um, some of the providers have checks beside their names here, and some of, some of them don't on our, on our paper. I don't know what that would entail. Cause on the sheet that I have through the Excel that should go through, you should have eighteen providers in mind that I provided did not have any checks to be copied. Oh, let me rephrase that, I'm sorry. Uh, somebody who it was given to, to go ahead to finish in signing off, so that when they signed off on their part of the contracts, they went ahead and utilized the sheet that I gave as a check-off sheet, I'm assuming. So, so for the ones that, that don't have checks, what does that mean? Nothing, sir. Okay. I apologize. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome, sir. Okay. Alright. I got, I got, I got thrown under the bus on that one.
Dr. Guzman, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so as far as the transportation contract, and we know that there are some of our EC students that use these, this transportation, is the timeframe in which they're supposed to be at school any different than the timeframe for our other kids?
That's no, actually, ma'am, there's a federal attestation that should be provided that the students are not, uh, ten minutes past that timeframe, or leave ten minutes earlier past that timeframe. Um, that is no different than, as a former principal, that has to be done during that timeframe to verify. That's especially true for self-contained students as well as regular EC students at that school.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Ms. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Dr. Guzman, I just wanted, for the records, to say that, uh, number one started in the wrong, wrong space. So actually, we have seventeen contractors instead of eighteen.
Okay. There is a, a motion on the contract of transportation that Dr. Robert Guzman has presented. A motion from Mr. Vontae Leach, and a second by Mr. Craig Lowry. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, may I, um, Ms. Ocean, to your question, and in terms of time and cost, especially for our EC students, we have started work on trying to identify how we can move kids back to their base school that would help in terms of cost and, uh, arrival time. Dr. Carr, you want to address that?
So we're currently going through the list of our self-contained students to see what, where's their home school, so that we can determine, are there spaces available in those buildings, and can we make accommodations to move them back to their home base, so that we can cut transportation costs and also cut down the time that students are having to take that transportation.
There's no need would be taken into consideration, not just, the cost is really not my, my issue, I'm just trying to make sure. I know some kids have a, an issue that needs to be addressed and can only be addressed in a certain space, so that wasn't really the issue. I was, I was giving some calls in regards to these transportation providers picking up the kids, um, and having them late to get in on campus, well past the tardy bill.
Right, our goal is to actually add self-contained classes so they don't have to travel to another school. And that way, we can reduce the time that they would have to be on buses or travel, cause we do wanna make sure all of our students have opportunities and enough time at school to meet the needs based on their IAPs. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Erica, share with the board, uh, the cost for transportation, through no fault of anyone, this year exceeded the budget by how much?
The final numbers are still out, but at least two and a half million dollars. I think it's gonna be closer to three. Contracted transportation represents almost six million dollars of a seven-point-six-million-dollar budget. EC costs alone are two million dollars, and there are four other categories that we monitor. Um, early college, CCP, um, foster, and McKinney-Vento homeless. So between all of those programs, the cost is very close to six million dollars.
Okay. Um, Ms. Erica, said, sir, with the financial report?
I have included the financial report, um, a copy should be at everyone's desk. Um, we had our year-end, all our files are updated, everything is balanced, and we'll be given a report later on, once we have all the receivables and payables. Um, I can answer any questions anybody has about the final report.
John?
So nothing's changed right now, everything's still the same?
We currently have no budget, and so we're operating on a continuing resolution. We've received notice that the earliest we could get a budget is July the twenty-fourth, but no one seems to be optimistic about that date, but that's the earliest that they've indicated we could have a new budget. So we're operating on what was in place for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year until otherwise approved.
Can I make a motion to approve this as is?
Hang on one second, Mr. Craig.
Go ahead and do this and then come back to me.
Alright. Mr. John Simmons has made a motion to approve the financial report as is. Mr. Leach has made a second. All of those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Craig?
Well, I'll do this one first, uh, Ms. Erica, is anything new with the budget amendments? Does anything you need to cover?
For the amendments?
Yes.
No, sir, those are year-end, and again, I've put on there that there may be additional ones pending payables and receivables as we finish closing out the year.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments too, and then, Mr. Lawson-
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments, too, and then Mr. Lawson, I had something else I wanted to ask.
I think Mr. Terry has a question, Mr. Lawson.
Y'all give me a workout up here now. Mr. Terry?
So with the with the the situation we got into with the with the transportation, and we went over budget a little bit, like you said, maybe 2.5 or something like that. In those situations, where does the where does that those funds come from if we go over over budget?
So I have been here 23 years, and in all of those 23 years, transportation's budget has been overspent, with the exception of the COVID year, for obvious reasons. And it comes from a combination of sources. There are smaller grants that help us fund, like we get additional funds specifically for McKinney-Vento and homeless. So those amounts are refunded back to O56 to cover. EC has built into their federal O60 budget, it doesn't cover the whole amount for EC, but we have $800,000 set aside there to help cover. Also, there's smaller portions in separate McKinney-Vento grants. We have ESER funding that we use to cover some of that, and then local. Local is the biggest part that covers the difference every year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think at the last meeting, we we voted on Preston Douglas Associates. What time of the school year does they take that audit? Is it this time of the year, or is it around January?
So they'll be doing the preliminaries, and the hope every year is to have the audit completed by October the 31st. It's late if it's after December the 31st.
There's a motion by Mr. Craig to approve the budget amendments for 2022, 2023, a second by Ms. Ocean. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Mr. Craig?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If I could, I'd like to go back, I guess, Dr. Carr. When Dr. Emanuel posed a question with the MO, with the MOAs with RCC and getting our high school students the classes there. Now, is this the same thing where, and I'm going to use an example, like at graduation, this kid has 18 hours or 36 hours from RCC. They're a student at Purnell-Swet, and I but and I'm going to use this example because being there, they had one student that had two years of college. They were a full-time student at Swet, but they had two years at with RCC, so they were going to go into college as a junior. So this is part of what this year is, not all of it, but part of it. Okay, well, seeing that, I'm seeing to what Dr. Emanuel said, everybody's not going to get 36 hours. But if it's there, we do need to be having people encourage students to take every class an hour, in my opinion, that they can. If they can get nine hours, if they can get 18 hours, if they can go in as a sophomore, that's something. And a lot of kids, like you say, they're not going to go up there and volunteer to do that. And I heard somebody make the comment that they, well, this person didn't do nothing but study. Well, then I was told, no, that's not the case. They did have to study, but it wasn't like they didn't do anything else. So again, I'm going to go back, if that's the case, we do need to be encouraging this opportunity for our students, and if that's through the high school principals, so be it, and counselors, they need to be encouraged to use this that's there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, please. So you approved in partnership with RCC career counselors, whose responsibility it is to do just that. Ms. Freeman, or Dr. Carr, you might want to address that, but every high school has a career counselor.
We have some career counselors that are hired through RCC and some that are hired through us, but every high school has a career counselor that is supporting students in reviewing the courses they're taking and looking at what other courses are available for them. So that is their primary role, so they're also working very closely with Mr. Herman, so that we can make sure those opportunities with CTE courses, that we have more students taking those courses, and the articulation between us and RCC, so they can can start the classes with us, but continue with RCC, so they can get other credentials. So those are types of things that we're currently working on, and they're currently reviewing all of those pieces. So that is a big piece of this agreement, is those career coaches meeting with students on a regular basis.
And I'm just going to make a comment, and I feel like the best career counselor that we had was actually a principal, and I'm not sure if he was doing it the the way that public schools of Robson County wanted him to, or if he was doing it his way. But Mr. Prater was the best in getting these kids in the CCP program, because if he looked at your track history and determined that you were competent and able to to take these classes, he enrolled you in anyway. So that, at first, I was kind of skeptical about it, but it works out. He gets those kids that are that have the potential to go and do and take these classes and and academically still, he enrolls them in them. He goes through himself and goes through every child and schedules them in these classes, whether they like it or not. So, I mean, it may not be the the way that you want to do it, but just like I said, the kids are not going to do it themselves. Sometimes they have to have a little bit of encouragement, a little bit of a push.
Thank you, Ms. Ocean. Closed session. Mr. Trey Britt?
I moved at the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County, going to closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A, 1 and 6, and to consult with attorney retained by the Board in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A, 1 and 3, and to consider student matters that are considered, according to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A, 1 and 115C-402, and 20 U.S. Code 1232G. Gracious. I might get this job somebody else.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor to go to closed session, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
Make a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
Motion to approve closed session minutes by Mr. John Simmons and second by Von Te Leach. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. John? Were you wrong there?
Make a motion to approve legal issues and by attorney.
No, no, no. You just need a motion that you can, you can take that action in closed session and you did. So you need a motion now just to approve the personnel report.
Okay.
Certified and classified.
All right. Make a motion to approve personnel certified and classified.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve certified and classified personnel as presented. John Simmons made the motion. Ms. Ocean made the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I place that everybody's side information on possible two dates for Board PD information, August 11th, which is Friday before the 8, including the meal, Saturday, August 12th, 8 to 12, including breakfast and lunch for your consideration.
Have y'all taken a look at this? It was the board's pleasure. As board members, has anybody got any conflicts with dates or anything like that? May or may not? So we're gonna move forward with these two dates.
Yes.
Not the 11th and 12th, which is Friday, which is gonna be a workshop in the Education PD information sessions, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Not both.
Both days.
Friday afternoon and half day on Saturday.
Right. And I need a motion.
Motion to, I got made a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye. You are adjourned. Thank you.